We're going to convene in a quorum and call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District. The invocation to, uh, let's see. Call to order the meeting Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherryburg Lane, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present are Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Casey Phelan, Ms. Crystal Davidlaw, Ms. Paoila Gonzalez Fusiliar, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, Kenny Fernandez will be here late. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I've asked Mr. Phelan if he will provide our invitation tonight, and the pledges will be given by Ms. Crystal Davidlaw. Will you please stand?
Pray with me, please. Dear heavenly, most gracious Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for each and everyone gathered here today. We ask that you help guide us and direct us as we make these important decisions. Watch over us and help us throughout the rest of our evening. In your holy and most gracious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we have a policy update presentation. Where is Jody?
She's right here.
Okay.
Good evening, board members. And Dr. Powell? Is that okay? Can you hear me?
I think so. It's just, it's not at its best.
Okay. So, this should be fairly easy. Last time, we, um, you guys approved EFA and EFB and adopted those. That, those were designed to replace EF local. So, tonight, we're just asking you guys to take action, to actually delete EF local from the policy manual. And the reason why the adoption didn't do that is because it wasn't specifically replacing it last time.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Jody.
Yep, no problem.
The board is going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to, uh, Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee unless the individual who's subject to the deliberation or hearing requests a public hearing concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendation to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and terminations of contract for professional personnel. 551.071 to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We'll reconvene in open session as close to 7:00 PM as we can get in here. The board is reconvening in open session at 7 o'clock PM. All right. We'll go, is that as loud as we're gonna get? All right. We're gonna have to, our system is not very good, but we are moving to a new building and not investing a dime in this one, so we're just gonna have to talk really loud tonight. Sorry. No, they're good. So, go ahead. Special recognition.
There you go. Okay. Well, good, board members, tonight, we have a lot of exciting recognitions for this evening. The well-being of our students, as you know, our staff and our families is extremely important to us here in Pasadena ISD. So, tonight, we're very excited to recognize three campuses that went above and beyond to make health a school priority. I would like to invite Elise Neff, our instructional specialist for coordinated school health, and I see Amber McNeeshia's here as well, and she will say a few words about the America's Healthiest Schools Award.
Thank you so much. Um, the Alliance for a Healthier Generation recognized 406 schools nationwide to be named as America's Healthiest Schools for the 2021-2022 school year. This recognition celebrates schools' dedication to supporting the health and well-being of students, staff, and families. This year, schools were recognized in nine categories, including strengthening the whole child, cultivating staff well-being, and increasing family and community engagement. Schools earned the distinction by successfully meeting the rigorous set of criteria for serving healthier meals and snacks, getting students moving more, offering high-quality physical and health education, and empowering school leaders to become healthy role models. Fisher Red Bluff and Turner Elementary prioritized healthy policies and practices despite numerous challenges resulting the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. These three schools have found fun, creative ways to keep all kids and their families active, eating healthy, healthy, and engaged in learning. They have gone above and beyond to ensure that they are setting them on the path to lifelong health. So, on the behalf of PE Health and Wellness Office, we would like to recognize Hugo Amaro, Pam Straker, and Savannah Vauder, and Jackie Kaver, who is frantically trying to get here from a trunk-or-treat event at their campus, um, but we'll recognize her anyway, along with their principals, Blanca Roman, Tammy Hinton, and Jennifer Katz. Thank you for all that you do to promote health and wellness on your campus, and congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Jackie, hurry, Jackie.
Uh-oh. Here she comes.
And Jackie Kaver.
Six minutes flat.
She's not always this dramatic.
Did she brought a banner because all the schools get these banners to hang in their gym?
They're massive.
Congratulations. All right. Well, board members and other distinguished guests, here we have exciting announcement to make. One of our Pasadena Memorial High School students made a perfect, that's right, perfect score on his AP 2D and Design exam, and this is extremely rare, as you can imagine, and accomplished by less than 1% of students who took the exam worldwide. That's not nationwide, that's worldwide. This outstanding accomplishment is a positive reflection of the top quality education he's getting at Pasadena Memorial and the outstanding Fine Arts Department we have here in our district. So, here to present the award is Mr. Sean Owen, Assistant Principal at Pasadena Memorial.
Thank you, Dr. Powell, and thank you to our school board. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize a very special accomplishment by one of our Pasadena Memorial High School graduates of 2022. Brandon Vargas took the AP exam for 2D Art and Design last May. Working under the guidance of Mr. Jose Alvarez Lucio, Brandon submitted his art portfolio consisting of 15 images to showcase his design process and five pieces of his own artwork to demonstrate skillful synthesis of materials, processes, and ideas. AP graders analyzed his works and awarded him maximum points in all of the exam components. As Dr. Powell mentioned, this extremely rare feat is only accomplished by less than 1%, .5% to be exact, of the students who took the exam worldwide and is a direct reflection of the top quality education being offered at Pasadena Memorial High School by Mr. Alvarez, along with the outstanding Pasadena ISD Fine Arts Department. Brandon and Mr. Alvarez, will you please come forward to be recognized for this outstanding Congratulations on a job well done. We are very proud of you. We also want to recognize Brandon's parents. Please stand to be recognized. And Mr. Jeremy Richardson, the principal of Pasadena Memorial High School. We do have his artwork in the foyer, so if you'd like to view it afterwards, it's right in the foyer. Thank you very much.
Well, board members, this next individual needs no recognition of their name because you know who they are, or no introduction, I should say, but Linda Fletcher, who is our awesome Executive Director of Fine Arts, is here to talk about the Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction.
Thank you, Dr. Powell and school board members. I'm here to share an amazing accomplishment by our district visual arts program that's led by Shannon Regosa, who's our Coordinator of Fine Arts, and Gabriel Flores, who's the district lead art teacher. The Texas Art Association created a program called District of Distinction a few years ago to honor districts that are leading the way in visual arts. These districts receiving this award exhibit outstanding leadership in promoting the arts in their district and community. The critics, oh, excuse me, the criteria for the award includes participation in the Youth Art Month Show at the State Capitol, a high level of participation in VACE competition, which is sort of like the art UIL equivalent for grades K through 12. It includes 10 registered events referred to as Texas Big Art Day, of which our community event is called PISD Big Art Day Chalk Art Festival, five field experiences such as field trips to museums, zoos, galleries, workshops with artists, district exhibitions, collaboration with other disciplines like STEAM fairs, painting murals for departments and musicals, and a minimum of 60 hours of community service. We want to congratulate Shannon Regosa, Coordinator of Fine Arts, Mr. Gabriel Flores, who is here, district lead art teacher, and our representatives for our teachers. We have Ms. Teresa Tomlinson from Jensen Elementary, Ms. Kelly Finley from Pasadena High School, and Selena Tienda from Bondi Intermediate. They are here tonight as representatives to accept the District of Distinction Award for the third year in a row for Pasadena ISD. Congratulations.
And Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like, less than 5% of the districts in the state?
Less than 5%.
So, that's pretty awesome.
Congratulations.
So, board members, we have one last recognition that's really special tonight. We're gonna recognize all of our campuses that received an A rating from the TEA Accountability System last school year, and all of our campuses who received all or all but one of the distinctions that were available to them from the Texas Accountability System. So, you know Dr. Hickman? I don't know what's wrong with me tonight. You know Dr. Karen Hickman, who is here to recognize these outstanding campuses and their leaders?
Good evening, Dr. Powell and our board members. This is an exciting night and quite an achievement by all of our campuses. Last year, we had 14 campuses earn an A on the statewide A-through-F academic accountability rating system. We're also proud of the fact that we had 41 of our campuses earn 124 distinctions district-wide. That is a wow for our district. We're very proud of all of our campuses. But tonight, we're gonna see the cream of the cream, because these are the folks that either made the A, or they made all but one of the distinctions possible for their schools. So, at this time, we're gonna start with the elementaries, if they're ready. They earned five out of five possible, and they have an A. Frazier Elementary. Five out of five, and an A. Jensen Elementary. Four out of five, and an A. They were, they were allowed to bring some of their friends who helped that happen. Metta Elementary. Five out of five, and an A. Red Bluff Elementary. Four out of five. Self-Belt Elementary. Four out of five, and an A. Sparks Elementary. Four out of five, and an A. Turner Elementary with an A rating. Are we gonna do, oh, with this group? Okay, so let's hear it for our, wait a second, not yet, we're still shaking hands back there. Super, super proud of you guys. If you go out with Troy there, we're going to take your picture. And we're going to start celebrating our middle schools. So, Malalo Middle. Five out of six, and an A. Morris Middle. Five out of six, and an A. Our intermediate schools also are shining bright. Beverly Hills with an A. Bondi Intermediate. Six out of seven distinctions, and an A. Jackson Intermediate. Six out of seven distinctions. Miller Intermediate. Six out of seven, and an A. We're gonna have one of our high schools join this group. CTHS. Six out of seven, and an A. And I know you guys have heard this before, but we have one more amazing accomplishment. Tegler. 100%. We've never had a school with a 100. They're in the alternate, uh, schools category, 100%. All of the points possible. Let's go. I think that's an A. We are super proud of all of you, all of our schools. You guys did an outstanding job. Let's give it up for all of our middle, intermediate, and high schools. Way to go. And you guys can follow Troy out that way for another beautiful photo op.
So, Dr. Hickman, the board was wondering why you were yelling, and you do that so you don't cry, right?
I do do that, and I didn't cry.
She's so proud. She's so proud.
I am very proud of them, besides that. So, I might be yelling even if I was gonna cry.
Any of you who came this evening to see the special recognitions and would like to leave, you're welcome to do so at this time, or if you'd like to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you're also welcome to do that. So, any of you that wanna leave, now's your exit time, and we certainly understand. Next on the agenda is public comments, and these are the comments related to items on the open session portion of the agenda, and there are no public comments on this section of the agenda. So, we'll move to consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Personnel section. Consideration and possible approval of administrative personnel. And I'm going to ask Mr. Phelan if he will introduce these or make the motion and then introduce.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, I move that we accept the addenda item A and B.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Do you wanna introduce those, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Amanda Johnson, are you here? There you are.
There you are.
Ms. Amanda Johnson is being considered for the position of Communications Alumni Project Coordinator.
Not being considered, you're it.
You have family with you?
I do. Both my parents and one of my sons. The other one's at an orchestra monitor.
Fantastic. Welcome to the family. Mr. Darren Quintero, where you at, sir? There you are. Mr. Quintero is being, uh, accepted for the program position of Program Specialist with Special Education. Do you have friends and family with you?
And my wife, Chrissy Quintero.
Stand up.
Welcome to the family, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's move to consideration and possible approval of central office reorganization for cost savings of approximately $12,615.
Second.
Was that you, Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Yeah. And seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
Board members, as you know, Dr. Hickman is retiring in December, so there'll be perhaps some future changes, but I just appreciate your consideration of these at this time.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Do you wanna?
So, it's a reorganization, so it's not like a stand-up-and-bring-your-family kind of night, but of course, I will be glad to. Dr. Troy McCarty, where are you, sir? Being named as Deputy Superintendent of Governance, Operations, and School Services. And then Tony Lopez. Tony Lopez is being named Deputy Superintendent of Staff and Academic Achievement.
And we know y'all are gonna do a fantastic job, and you already are, and we appreciate both of you. So, moving on to certified personnel, this is for information only, as is support personnel. And so, anyone who came for introduction of administrative personnel that we just acted on, if you and your family would like to leave, you can certainly do so at this time. Now, we'll move to the educational section. Safety Emergency Management Spotlight. And Derek, you're gonna, you're going to present this, Derek Duckett.
Good evening, board trustees and ladies and gentlemen.
Can we flip that around? Okay. We're having some technical difficulties.
Well, we'll talk through it while we do it. So, it's a, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I would say I'm excited to present about the safety initiatives that we're doing in our district, because I am, because I think Pasadena ISD does above and beyond what a lot of districts actually do, and we don't get the opportunity to tell the public and the board a lot about the different things that we're doing. It's sad that it takes another event like yesterday in St. Louis, that this is the forefront in everyone's mind. I wish that safety never had to be talked about in schools, and we just talked about educating kids, is why we're here. But we do, uh, take that seriously in Pasadena ISD, and we do everything in our power to keep them safe while they're trying to get a quality education, as they're clearly getting by what you just saw with all these schools. So, if you watch this screen, I'll try and read behind me. So, I broke down this presentation to a couple different areas. I'm gonna talk about some of the training and programs we do in Pasadena ISD, some of the physical and technical security items that we have in place, and then, lastly, some of the process and procedures and new things that came out from the state following the Uvalde incident. I don't need it, we're good. Thank you, though. So, first and foremost on there, we've got threat assessment. So, if you look at all these different active shooter incidents that have happened on school districts around the world, at the end of the day, it comes out, they go, man, someone should've said something, because there were signs, right? There was always a sign. They were either on social media making comments, the neighbor across the street saw him doing something bad to animals a long time ago. There's all kinds of things that people go, I don't wanna be that person that says something, but that's weird, or something's not right. So, at Pasadena ISD, we have threat assessment training across the whole district, and every single one of our campuses is trained in threat assessment. So, what is threat assessment? It helps identify and address different kind of behaviors that you go, I'm not necessarily saying this is a bad thing, but it, it warrants us taking a further look. It's not a punitive action, but it's something that we have a team of folks, so includes on a campus, a principal, an AP, a counselor, oftentimes law enforcement, folks like myself in safety, and we're gonna take another look at that and go, hey, was this action intentional? Do they have the means to carry out what the potential threat was? If so, if not, how do we bring this kid back into the fold, make sure he gets the help that he needs, address the victim's needs, all those kind of things? That's what threat assessment is. So, our staff, I would say, most of them have had this training more than once. We offer it every year multiple times. We follow the, uh, where's it at up there? The Secret Service model, uh, which is the national model for schools. That's what we use. And, uh, Dr. Melissa Reeves, who we bring in as part of the Sigma Group, but it's also with the Texas School Safety Center, and they do a great job training our folks. In addition to the campuses, we do have a district team that also, if needed, would meet and discuss threat assessment. So, that is a get out front of the problem, identify it, and fix it before it actually becomes a real threat. So, every campus in the state of Texas and probably across the nation does drills. We are no different. I just have it up here to highlight that we follow the standard response protocols issued by the state of Texas. In addition to that, the normal drills that you hear about, the evacuations, the fire drills, the lockdown drills, all those kind of things, we go a step further in Pasadena ISD, and we teach ALICE here. Our police department does a great job of training our staff in that. COVID kind of put a hiatus on, on all the training we got to do, but we're back, I'd say, better than ever. They've got a program that we're dealing with that's about a two-hour training program for every one of our staff members to go through on all the campuses. And ALICE is just a series of options for our folks. Instead of saying, hey, we're gonna close the door and act like we're not here and hide, we're gonna give you and empower you and your kids to make choices, that, hey, we can run, we can fight, we can do all these other things. So, we take that step here because we want to give our kids and our staff the best chance of survival. God forbid we ever have one of these incidents someplace. Part of that, what we do, we, uh, we contract with a company called Raptor. We have Raptor Emergency Management and Alert. And what this is, is an app on your phone, and it allows for a one-touch, every staff member on every campus can hit a button and say, hey, we need help, because we have a very serious emergency here. So, it doesn't just leave the principal in charge, it leaves the classroom teacher who looks out the window and sees a threat. They can alert the district that there's an issue. Part of that includes reunification, so wherever we had to leave a campus and go meet somewhere else, all the parent guarding information's in that app. We just did a drill with Raptor, they came down about a month ago. We just did a drill with Raptor, they came down about a month ago. Very impressed with the system that we had in place already. We practiced it, we went to Sagemont Church, they were gracious enough to host us, and we kind of walked through the process of doing a reunification with them. In addition to that, it does other things. You can manage the incident, you can see accountability as you're going through it. It has teachers, they can say, hey, I don't necessarily have an emergency, but I'm going to hit this button because I need an administrator to my room. There's a fight, there's something suspicious, something out the window, whatever. It has all those capabilities, so we provide that in addition to the drills that we do. So, Safe School Ambassadors is a really cool program. There's a couple of other districts around our area that do this, but Safe School Ambassadors is a group out of California that comes down, and they take a group of kids on all of our intermediate and high school campuses. They take about 40 kids, eight adults or so, staff members, and they train them on intervention techniques and bully, how to recognize bullying, and kind of turn the page, and change the culture of that campus, and teach them ways to take the focus off of that and teach them better ways to deal with it. And so, the cool thing about it, it's not just the straight A kids, it's not just the trouble kids, it's kind of a mixture of all these kids, because they're all leaders, right? You could be a gang member and be a leader, you could be a straight A student and be a leader, you could be the football captain, whatever it is, but you all have different spheres of influence, and so that's what this group does. It kind of brings them all together. One, it kind of builds the camaraderie among the different groups, but it gives everybody a voice on the campus. So, that's something that we're doing. This is our second year, I think, at all these campuses. It's a grant. I see Olivia back there. We have a great grants department that finds these things for us. But that's going to continue on, and hopefully, we will be able to keep doing that and get outside the grant and maintain it ourselves after next year. Anonymous alerts, this is a great thing that we took on about two years now. We've always had an anonymous reporting system, it's a law, but this one is something we added last year where it gives us the ability to communicate back and forth with people who report. So, the students are the first people that know when something's happening on a campus. If we don't have a way to get more information when they tell us that they see things that are happening, it's bad for us. So, this gives us the ability to talk back and forth with them and get better investigation information so our police can actually investigate true threats. Lightspeed alert, this is something new that we're just rolling out, it's kind of a pilot currently, but we will be rolling this out district-wide. What this is, is a little bit intrusive on the kids, but we issue devices. Our board approved during COVID for everyone to have one-to-one devices, which is great. The bad thing with that, we all know with kids, they get online, and they have all this power at their fingertips now that we didn't have when we were kids, right? They're on the internet, searching things, saying different things. This gives us the ability to monitor what they're doing online. So, if they type in something about they want to hurt themselves, we're going to get an alert. If they type in something that they want to harm other people, we're going to get that alert. So, this gives us a way to modify everything that they're doing when they're using one of our pieces of equipment to help keep our school safe. So, there's a list of things on this for the physical and technical security that we do in the district. I won't read them all to you. The first three, I have bond there in parentheses because we're very thankful for the community who passed the bond in May. We have all these things in place, access control, video management, security systems, intrusion alarms. They're all just really old, and they're not the best of what we could be providing for our staff and our students. And so, with the bond, you gave us the ability to try to rip and replace these things and put in the new and better equipment. So, that's what we're in the process of doing now, is picking out what equipment's going to work best for us, use the best use of the money that you gave us. And so, hopefully, we'll be done with that over the next year and a half or two. We have a great police department here. I think Chief Russell's going to talk after me. But in addition to them, something else we took on this year to try to keep our school safe is we contract with outside agencies. As you know, you approved the extra funding for that, and so, I would say, if you talk to our campuses, they've seen a lot better presence of police. As great as our police department is, they're limited in numbers, it's a hard job to fill, and so, we need outside help for that, so that's something else we've been doing. Safety monitors at our high school and intermediate campuses, I'm interviewing 15 of them tomorrow morning, so hopefully, we can get some of our intermediate campuses filled up. Our metal detector screening teams, that's a neat thing that we do here at the district, kind of unannounced, no schedule to it, but we randomly schedule days for a group of individuals, or past administrators of some of our campuses, to show up on our campuses and random draw of classrooms and just do a random metal detector screening on them. So, what it really is, it's a deterrent for our kids to know at any given day, these people could show up, and I really don't want to have something in my possession that I'm not supposed to have. Another great grant opportunity that we had over the summer is we had about a $500,000 or $700,000 grant at a district our size with 67 campuses. That doesn't go anywhere, so what can we do with $500,000, $700,000 to get the best bang for our buck? And so, our facilities department located a company that came, and they installed a safety film on all of our glass exterior doors and adjacent windows. So, they're not bulletproof, but they are pretty much intrusion-proof. I'm a fit individual. If I took 10 minutes with sledgehammer trying to get in some of these, I would be worn out before the police got to me. So, that's on all of our campuses. The last thing on there is some upgraded maintenance security with some of the new things that I'm going to talk about on the next slide with the state, and how we've decided how to secure our schools. We noticed a few of our schools have difficulty for people to be able to judge who's at the door, communicate with them before they decide they want to let them into our campuses. So, we are about 28 or 30 campuses that we've changed video intercom system there for them, so that way, they can see who's there, communicate their needs, all that way before you make the decision to let someone on campus that may or may not need to be there. And lastly on here, we'll talk about some of the processes and procedures. So, every three years, the state requires us to do safety and security audits on every one of our campuses, which is about a 550-page document, or 550-question document that we go through and really assess what are the weaknesses of this campus. So, I'm doing that this year. I'll be presenting that to the board later this actual school year, and I'll bring you the results of that, and we can talk about the findings. The summer, the state said, hey, after Uvalde, we're going to make some changes, and so, we're requiring this summer for every school district in Texas to come and look at the exterior doors of every building you have. Not just what's on it, but how it actually functions. Does it work with the air on? Does it work with the air off? If you try to close it, and there's a strong wind, does it completely shut? So, our fantastic facilities and maintenance folks went around this summer and pretty much changed all the plans they had, but they focused on this and have done a great job identifying doors that needed a little extra attention. That's always a work in progress. We're shifting soils here in Texas, so every time the foundation moves, so does one of our doors. So, unfortunately for them, it's, fortunately for them, it's job security. In addition to the door inspections this summer, Pasadena ISD said every one of our exterior doors and interior classroom doors, when kids are present doing instruction, are going to be locked and closed. So, if you look at Uvalde, two things happened that those victims feel prey to, and one was they got in the building to begin with, and then they were able to get into a classroom door. And so, we said, we're going to take the extra step when we can to make sure that every door is closed on the outside, and the classrooms are closed as well. So, if you may get in, you're still going to have to get through another door before you get to one of our kids. Obviously, there's exceptions to that. Kids go outside, kids go to the cafeteria, kids do a lot of things. We can't keep them 100% safe all the time, but when we can provide that extra layer of security, we're going to do that. And thank you for our staff members that are in the audience. I know that's a pain in the rear for you to try to make that happen. It's not the funnest environment to teach in, but I think it does help. And then, weekly exterior door sweeps. So, the state is going around, in addition to all these different things, and they're trying to do intruder audits on our schools across the state. So, if you're unfamiliar with that, they're sending random people to come try to break into our schools, which makes us feel really good that strangers are trying to break into our schools. I understand what they're trying to accomplish in that. Our police department already does this for us, it's part of our safety and security audits as well. But they've come around to six of our campuses, I believe, so far, and we are 6-0. Full pass, no findings.
Aren't we seven?
Maybe seven?
Seven with the summit?
Oh, summits. Seven with the summit. So, 7-0. 60 more to go. But what they're checking for is are exterior doors actually locked? Are we doing weekly exterior door sweeps? Meaning, someone on that campus every single week is going around and checking that those doors are locked? And then, we have the policy of our doors being closed, and the inside, they're coming to check and make sure we're actually following with what we're saying we're doing. So, 7-0. Hopefully, we'll keep that going. If not, we'll come and address it with you, and we'll address it with that campus. But those are all things that the state has put on us to keep our kids safe, and we're doing our best at the district level to do that. And that's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Derek, thank you for your leadership in this. You know, it's great to know that we've got a plan for everything that happens.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I believe because of your leadership and because of the safety and security issues set forth by our district, I believe that we've got a great chance.
I agree with you, and I appreciate the support from the board.
I really appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just quickly, on the very rare chance that somebody doesn't have their cellphone, battery's dead, with the Raptor system, what are the options for communicating?
So, Raptor is not the be-all, end-all.
Okay.
Right? It's not the only option, it's an added option. So, you look at, when we normally do, there's an incident, they're communicating already, they have texts, they do intercoms, they set off fire alarms, they do all these kind of things, depending on what the situation is. If it's a chemical spill, we have alertus beacons in our Pasadena schools. So, there's a lot of different ways to get that information. This is something we felt necessary to provide our staff, because you look at Parkland, Florida, multi-story building, they had a shooting, the folks on the third floor had no clue that anything was going on. You would think shots in the building, you would hear it, but it's not always the case. So, this gives our other staff members the ability to warn others on the campus, and at the same time, letting the district folks know, hey, there's an incident, so police are responding, administrators are responding, all in one thing. So, yeah, it is a cellphone technology. Anything technology is going to have a fail point if you don't have reception, those kind of things, but someone there will. And so, and when you start hearing that go off, it's pretty loud. So, the good thing is, while yours may not work, somebody else's hopefully is going to. So, it gives another option for safety.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment, more so than a question, but you highlighted the bond that helped us and supported that, you know, a lot of these things that we are doing and we're doing. And that's through the support from the community, because a lot of these things, all of these things are pretty much unfunded mandates from the state that we're dealing, and we're dealing with your leadership, so we appreciate that.
Yes, sir. And like I said, the grants department does a great job of finding us money.
The grants, the mandates, I mean, it is.
It's a group effort, for sure.
The lease department, everybody.
Yes, everybody plays a hand.
Thank you.
You are a fit individual.
Thank you, Kevin.
Chief, are you up?
Yep. Good evening. Good evening. Great job, Derek. I really appreciate it for somebody that's been with us a couple of years. He's really hit the ground running, and it's amazing how many things fall on his plate. I am very thankful for the great job he does. Some of the other ways of communication in our classrooms, if the Raptor system, every classroom has a telephone, every campus has handheld UHF radios. It's amazing, a lot of elementary schools have anywhere from 60 handheld radios, and then the number only goes up to high schools. So, I mean, the number's just tremendously. And those are for special areas. A lot of times, it's for teachers that are in the portables, teachers that have bus duty, but yet, those radios are there, and they are another means of communicating with the front office. So, we have lots of ways that we try to make it available to the teachers and staff to report anything that happens on campus. Just wanted to give a real quick update since I last visited with you in August. Our contract officer program, we currently have 12 officers that are, work with other agencies that are signed up to work with us. We have three officers from Pasadena, four officers from Pearland PD, we have two precinct eight constables, we have one Harris County Sheriff's Deputy, one Waller, the city of Waller, sergeant from there, and one Texas State Trooper. So far, we have spent about $35,000 on payment for them for the days that they're here with us. Most days, we have anywhere from one officer, the maximum we have, usually Thursdays and Fridays are pretty well-covered. Sometimes, we have as many as six officers that work along with us on those days, and we're very thankful for those guys coming out and helping with the police presence. We also just had a job fair when we last visited. From there, we still have five people that are in the running. They have had their pre-poligraft interviews this last week, and this upcoming week, they will have polygraph examinations. One of them is certified, and the other four, we would have to send to an academy, which would be about a six, well, it's a six-month process going to a police academy. So, we got our fingers crossed for the one that's already certified, and got our fingers crossed for the other four that are still in the running on that. Our increased presence, I have to say, the kids are becoming, at the elementary level, are becoming much more accustomed to seeing us. In the past, since COVID, we haven't been in the campuses as much, so it's kind of a whole new group of elementary kids, and they're becoming very accustomed to seeing us. We're there enough. It is, last week, I actually shared with some of the supervisors, I said, we really need to get our high school officers out of the high school and make them walk more of the elementary schools also, because it is just, the kids at the elementary schools are just thrilled to see us. It's not uncommon for kids to come up and give us hugs, and they're just, everybody wants to say hi. And again, one of the things that I learned earlier in the year is you can't wave to an elementary school class, you have to wave to each individual elementary school student. But they are there, and they're excited to see us, and we're excited to see them. It is very refreshing, it definitely recharges your batteries seeing those elementary school kiddos. I think that, Derek hit the nail on the head, safety and security is not convenient. It is a pain in the butt. And to our staff, to our teachers, and to our principals that are here that are doing it, they're doing a fantastic job. As I walk through these campuses, the exterior doors are closed, if the kids are in the classroom, the doors are closed, and just everybody's pulling along and doing their part, even though it's not convenient, and even though sometimes we have air issues, kids have to go to the bathroom, they're knocking at the door. There are some inconveniences, but everybody knows that it's worth it, and I want to say that they're doing a fantastic job. I also want to tell Kevin that his group, Tom Douglas's group, they are doing a bang-up job on these doors. There are a lot of problems with them, but I have to tell you, anytime my officers have notified the school and a work order's been put in, your staff has been there, if not that day, the next day. And that is very impressive considering the number of doors that we have. If I'm on a campus and have an issue with the door, if you have somebody there that's working on the electricity or working on the plumbing, if I tell them what the issue is, they quit what they're doing, then they come over and look at the door and try to fix and do whatever they can for that. So, I really want to say what a great job they're doing. So, with that, I just want to say thank you again for y'all's support. Thank you to the staff that's out there for y'all's support also. It takes a group effort of all of us working together, and this is why we're Pasadena ISD proud.
Thank you, Chief, for you and your department.
I have a question on the possible four that are going into the academy. Do we pay for that as the district, and how do we retain them?
Well, we have them sign an agreement where they agree to work with us for three years. The price of the academy is approximately $3,000 for the class and for the equipment, and we hire them as a police officer and pay them a full salary for those six months while they're in class. We have had two officers complete the program, one graduated in January, and one graduated August 31st. They're both with us, we're both very excited and proud to have them, but we're very cautious about who we hire, because quite frankly, we don't want to pay somebody to sit in class to be a student and have them jump ship. And the agreement is that they repay us the $3,000. Well, that's a heck of a deal for them. So, we're really cautious, make sure that we hire somebody of honor and integrity that is going to stick to their word and is going to give us those three years that we agree upon.
I want to say something to Chief, too. I've done this before, but I want to compliment your policemen.[1678.83]
Thank you.
They do a phenomenal job. They're always courteous, they're helpful, and they're, they're shining stars like you and everybody else with the corporation.
Absolutely.
And we're really proud of your department.
We look very hard for them and we are very proud. We strive to provide a service. We're here to help the community and that makes the hiring process challenging sometimes because we're very particular about who's going to be with our kids, who's going to be with our staff. And we want to find the right people, so it is very much a challenge, but I'm very proud of the team that we have.
We are too.
I want to make a comment. Dr. Powell, the minute something happens, she notifies every board member as to what's taking place, what's being done, the whole situation. That is so important to us because the public has started calling us when they see something happen. And by her relaying the facts to us, then we can tell the constituents, everything's under control, the superintendent's on top of it. We really do appreciate the communication that administration brings to board members.
And the two-way communication.
Oh, I've said for years, if I could pick my boss, it'd be Dr. Powell. So I was very excited when y'all made that choice.
It worked out.
I'm surprised no board member asked you about the high school kids wanting to hug y'all when y'all cut your school money.
With that being said, I do have a comment. So about two weeks ago, I was at Memorial, watched my daughter's volleyball game, and after they finished, I got a video of one of your officers throwing the football with some of the football players. And it was just the coolest thing.
My first guess would be Johnny Pedraza. That would be my first guess. We have some fabulous officers. I'm telling you, the challenge, they, they understand and they hear, but some of y'all don't. The challenge is we're in the buildings in and out, day in and day out, and we see the kids over and over. Traditionally, police officers don't want anybody close to them because of everything we have on. Space is our friend, distance is our friend, but we don't have that luxury in the school environment. We are up close and personal and we have the benefit of seeing the people every day and getting to know some of the students. And I've made lifelong friends between students and faculty and staff. And I tell you, this has been the greatest job. I could never dream of a better job. Other police officers, they make a call, they deal with somebody that's having the worst day of their life, they deal with them for four or five minutes, 10 minutes, half hour, but then they're gone and probably never see the people again. We see the people the next day. And our officers like to follow up and say, hey, how'd that go when you went home? Or how's it going today? You know, has this gotten any better? So we're very blessed and we all know it. And again, thank you for, for your support.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Now we have a spotlight on multilingual department and that's Rolando Marchand.
Thank you for having us. This is a spotlight on our programs, bilingual and ESL, but also meets the requirement of the state of informing the boards every year about the program itself. Is this working? Perfect. So the main components are about the program, academic progress, and the English proficiency attainment, and also an update on waivers and exceptions that we have to file last In terms of program participation, we have 35%, a little bit over 35% of our students enrolled in Pasadena are identified as emerging bilingual students. And we have more than 20 languages still present in the district. So it's a very diverse district, which we all appreciate. In terms of participation, almost half of our students are in the transitional late exit program and followed by the ESL program. 5% of them are in the two-way dual language program. And so now, next year, we're going to be talking about three different programs at a time, which is very exciting. We have an area, an opportunity in terms of the parent of the Niles. We still have a 10%, which is a little bit higher in comparison with the state. So we're working in providing better programming for the students so parents and community understand the importance of participating in the program. So the members of the board have received a very extensive report. We're just going to do some highlights. And we're going to start with the academic performance. This is a graph. On the vertical axis, we have the percentage of students who will score at the approaches level in reading in English star. And on the horizontal axis, we have the different grade levels. So overall, we're going to go a little bit on highlights on this, but overall, our two-way dual language continues outperforming all sub-group populations. We have a growth, an important growth in all students as well as emerging bilingual students, which is the orange line. The same thing's happening for mathematics. We have the same kind of patterns. So let me go a little bit more on details on this. So we have the chance again to compare results from last spring to this spring, and our emerging bilingual students score higher at the approaches level in more than 20 points in fourth grade reading, fifth grade reading, Spanish mathematics, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade reading. So that means if they were in their twenties, now they are in their forties or forty or fifties in terms of percentage of students meeting their approach. At the meeting, at the MITS level, we have an increase of more than 20 percentage points in third grade and fourth grade reading. Our elementary schools have always been very successful in this process. At the master's level, which is very exciting, is the highest level, we have more than 10 percentage points for third grade and fourth grade reading again. So those are very important gains that we have. Now, for EBS students that outperform the all students category, this is for third grade in reading and MITS in masters, third grade mathematics in all performance levels, we outperform the students at the all group, all students group, and fourth grade mathematics also in all performance groups. So that's very impressive for our emerging bilingual students. For our two-way dual students, as we saw in the first slide, we have more than 10 points, percentage points higher in overall performance in every subject area in every single grade level. So we also have 100% of our students completing, meeting the standards in Algebra I and US History, right? And just as a reminder, our two-way dual students take this mathematics in Spanish all the way to seventh grade. And then, of course, Algebra I, we're doing everything in English, so it really transfers. The same with social studies, we switch to Spanish in fifth grade to eighth and then back to English, and 100% of our students met the standards. Then they meet, 100% of them has got, meets at fourth, at these grade levels. So we also have English I and English II EOC, biology and history. Again, biology is taught in Spanish in our two-way dual and the kids are still outperforming. Now, we feel some, have some areas in which we are working to grow, right? So we have some percentage gaps in which our students are not performing as well as the all group. So there are some five percentage point gaps for fourth grade reading, fifth grade reading and math, and sixth grade math. So we're working closely with the team. And there's a little bit of a bigger gap for sixth grade reading, seventh grade math, seven grade math, sorry, and Algebra I end of scores. Now in terms of proficiency, so proficiency is measured by the exam, they score the TELPASS, right? And what we measure there is that the students progress one proficiency level every year. And so we have grades K through second, we, 46% of our students progress that, met that goal. In grades three to 12, 33% of our students met that goal. Importantly, grades one, two, three, and five met higher than the state expected goal of 36. So that was, that was a great, great knowledge there, great point there. Now, the highest level that you get in TELPASS is advanced high. That means the students are almost ready to just receive instruction fully in English without any linguistic support. So we got improved results in speaking in grades, kinder first and fourth, in reading in all grade levels. So our students are reading very well in English and then in writing in all grades except in kinder, which is expected, right? Now, we also have improved in comparison to last year in writing in fifth and sixth grade levels. They show growth in percentages in that area and in all language domains except for speaking in grades seven and eight. So let's talk a little bit about speaking. District-wide and statewide, you probably have heard a lot of complaints about the speaking results for the TELPASS assessment, and we have been involved in conversations with the state about it. We have, district-wide, our proficiency level, highest proficiency level for speaking is below 5% for grades two to 12. The state, the highest percentage of speaking in advanced high in the state was 6%. So it's really a statewide issue with the assessment. So, and we complain and we express our misunderstanding of the situation because we have all these outstanding results academically in English, but yet the kids are not deemed proficient enough because of the speaking part of TELPASS. So that's something to take into consideration, which is, yeah, is great about a computer from second grade and up. So that's important. We're waiting to see what happens next year because the writing is going to be also scored that way. So let's see what happens with that. So this affected our reclassification, right? Our goal is to get our kids ready to be receiving full instruction in English without linguistic support. So this has been declining since they changed the assessment and we reclassified 74 kids. But we were in our numbers, we were expecting, not expecting, but we have deemed around 2,300 kids ready, that they didn't have supports for a star, that they didn't have, the teachers thought they were ready to be reclassified. Most of them did not get that because of the advanced high in the speaking.
And so when he says we're talking to the state, I'm on the commissioner's cabinet and at the last meeting, this became a big topic and it is a statewide problem, it's not a Pasadena ISD problem. So luckily, I got put on a committee all of a sudden, so trying to address this. I'm not sure what the timeline is, but they've heard us loud and clear and it's not just our district, it's others, that it's, it's not a system that's supporting our kids. They're successful on star, like super successful on star, but they're not exiting bilingual because of that one component. So they're doing well on the reading and the writing and the speaking is holding them back. That computer is holding them back.
You have some of our teacher's students who are bilingual students.
Right.
Who speak like you and I speak, who cannot get past the test.
Yeah, I would probably not pass it because of my heavy accent. Let's just say like that. Right.
So you would fail too?
I would, yeah. I'm like advanced highs. Never reclassified.
Well, if you've ever taken a course online and you have to speak, whether you're speaking Spanish or any other language, if you're, if it's not perfect.
It is very difficult. Yes.
Well, even when you ask Siri to call somebody.
Give directions. Tell me about it. So there is another, another thing that we need to consider, right? We have to apply for ESL waivers and bilingual exceptions because we didn't have enough appropriately certified teachers to serve them, right? So I have, by law, we have to give an update on that process. So for our bilingual exceptions, last school year, we applied for 117 bilingual teachers in grades, in that case, actually, we had them K through ninth grade. 106 of those were for the Spanish and 11 for Vietnamese because last year we had the numbers to offer the bilingual program in Vietnamese. This was an increase of 23% in, when we compare it with 2020, 2021. For ESL waivers, we have 79 ESL secondary and real language art teachers that were needed as ESL certified. That was an increase of 5% in comparison for the, to the previous year. We had 91 people of our teachers attending to the ESL institute, which is a course preparation for the ESL certification that we have in-house with around, like 90% of the kids, of the teachers who take the test, that go to our institute, get the certification. We're just working on getting them to take the test. So that's kind of like where we are in that process. So part of that, a way to solve this is professional development opportunities, and we have very specific professional development opportunities for increasing both bilingual and ESL certified teachers, but also you see a very extensive list of trainings and workshops that we have created in collaboration with CNI and Special Ed, everybody's hands, to equip our teachers better in how to supply the services that the students need and really respond to the linguistic, academic, and affective needs, which is what we want. As a result of these professional development opportunities, we have more than 4,000 teachers register throughout the whole year. This is one of our ESL institute cohort. At the, at the end of the third year, with the third day, we take a picture and kind of like share them up to get ready for the test. So that's an effective work on professional development that cannot be done without the support of teachers, coaches, the school leaders, and our instructional specialists. So this is a real team effort. So that's all I have as a highlight. If you have questions.
Awesome, awesome presentation. Thank you, Mr. Marchand. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes.
On your chart that showed bilingual and denial, what the, what the denial?
So I think we still have a little bit of history with some of our students who are dual-decoded, meaning they need the special education services, that in the past, before the state aligned to ESA legislation in how to identify them, they were kind of told, the parents, like, you know what, they need the special services, they don't need the language services. So we have a little bit of remnant of that. That's not allowed anymore, which is good. And then there's also a little bit of misunderstanding on the community of what the program really is offering. So we're hoping that with the move to the one-way dual, that's going to help us a little bit in that area to reduce the parent denials.
Thank you.
Other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Thank you again, Mr. Marchand.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Dr. Hitman wants a final word.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just have to say, this, this program started, how many years ago, Gloria?
A bunch.
25 years ago. And, very good. The way we serve our Hispanic students, particularly the ones who come to us with their first language, Spanish, is absolutely amazing. It's amazing. The commitment that our teachers have, this group has, the difference we're making in those kids' lives is crazy, crazy good. All of the other districts around us, when they start getting influx of immigrants and new, new, new folks who do not have English in place, who do they call? Ghost, no, they call us because of the work that we do and the scores that we get and the way these kids move. You guys need to be very, very proud. There's lots of districts that do not put in place the supports, that it costs a lot of money to do, but it's worth it because look at what those kids can do.
Absolutely.
So I just have to say that, and Rolando and his team is absolutely amazing.
Yes.
Thank you, Gloria.
Okay, we're ready to move on. Consideration of possible approval of the district improvement plan for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. I know there was, there, a lot went into developing this. Obviously, there was a glitch and we didn't get the information to be able to read until today. And I think this part of it was 78 pages, so I can't honestly tell you that I've been through all 78 pages yet, but I will be. And I'm certainly thankful for all the work that went into it. You know, I know it takes, it takes a village and that village is always around us and I appreciate every bit of it. So anyway, so any other discussion? Did we, we already voted on this, right? Okay, let's move to consideration of possible approval of campus improvement plans for 2022-2023 school year.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Again, our campuses did an outstanding job at doing this and, you know, we're, we are improving every single year. Y'all are doing a great job. Consideration of possible approval of 2022-2023 high school graduation dates, times, and locations.
So move.
Who is that? Mr. Sullivan and?
Not second.
And Ms., uh-huh?
Mr. Kendrick and.
Okay, okay. Mr. Kendrick and Ms. Sullivan, thank you. Hearing, are, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the lease agreement with NRG Stadium for the 2023 Pasadena Independent School District High School graduations at approximate cost of $215,000. Say it real quick and it doesn't seem like that much. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion.
I know it's a lot of money, but it's a wonderful opportunity for our kids, for the parents and the families of the graduates. It's quite different than being at the football stadium.
And that's six graduations for that price. So just keep that in mind because we're not a one-horse town.
No, we're not. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for TEA low attendance waiver for Sam Rayburn High School in Parkview Intermediate.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the application for a TEA missed instructional day waiver. application for a TEA missed instructional day waiver for Beverly Hills Intermediate. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Texas Governor's Office Criminal Justice Division Truancy Prevention and Intervention Grant Award in the amount of $100,000.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
Glad to see this because, you know, we used to have truancy laws, then all of a sudden, the legislature, in their brightness, decided we couldn't do that anymore, and which is pretty insane in itself, but this will help.
Yes, it will. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Harris County Department of Ed Case, C A S E, for Kids Partnership Grant Award for Frazier Elementary and the corresponding inter-local agreement in the amount of $27,300.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Houston Galveston Area Council Clean Vehicles Program and the corresponding agreement in the amount of $540,866.21.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Pardon?
Fernandez.
Oh, I knew that. Okay. Mr. Phelan.
Yes, ma'am. I further move that we take action authorizing the superintendent to negotiate and execute the corresponding agreement.
Okay, consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Houston Galveston Council Clean Vehicles Program and the corresponding agreement in the amount of $540,866.21, and action authorizing the superintendent to negotiate and execute the corresponding agreement. All, any discussion?
Do we need to make a motion on that?
No, that was, he, he did it. No, that's what he just did. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for South Houston High School choir members to travel to New Orleans, Louisiana, March 31st through April 3rd, 2023.
So move. Second.
Who was that? Mr. Kendrick? Was that you?
Yep.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
Just a point of interest, and I think it's wonderful that these kids are getting to go on these trips. But teachers and parents that go, there's so much more crime out there today than there has been in years past. Please emphasize on your students how careful that they must be.
They will be well protected. I know I have our choir directors here, and they're excited. This is a new opportunity that has come highly recommended by other choir directors, so they're going to have an amazing experience.
Awesome.
It's wonderful that they get this opportunity.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. We need to hear everything about this experience. Next is consideration and possible approval for Pasadena Memorial High School choir students to travel to and take classes in New York City, March 31st through April 3rd, 2023. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
Ditto for New York.
Yes. Hearing none. Nothing else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for Pasadena Memorial High School varsity volleyball team members to travel to Orlando, Florida to attend and compete in the KLS Scholarship Association, KSA volleyball tournament from August 30th to September 3rd, 2023. So move. Second. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar. Discussion. Was this a qualifier that got them there, Kenny?
The coach, the coach is here.
Scholarship opportunity.
I didn't see you.
They went last year.
We did. We attended last year, and the girls did really well. It was a great experience for the team, and we don't, you don't have to qualify to go.
Okay.
But they earned scholarships, perhaps, if they qualify, once they're there.
Opportunities for scholarships.
Good, good. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Sorry, I honestly didn't see you there. You're hiding back there, Casey. Congratulations. Consideration and possible approval for the J. Frank Dobie High School Orchestra to travel to Orlando, Florida to perform and participate in a clinic, March 9th through March 14th, 2023. So move. Second. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for the Pasadena High School Band to travel to Florida, March 11th through 15th, 2023. Students will travel to perform for Disney's Your Instrumental Workshop.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
We haven't asked, but are these trips all by flight or bus?
There's a variety. You want to talk about yours?
The one that's on the motion right now is by bus.
The orchestra is bus, the band?
Yeah.
By bus.
Okay.
And the others are plane?
There's a variety, right? Charter buses and.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries.
Board members, I just want to say thank you to our directors and our coaches and all these folks that come out. They get up at God knows when, like 4:00 AM or something to go to work, and then they do rehearsals, and then they come here, and it's past their bedtime. So thank y'all for coming and showing your faces and just letting the board see you and know how important this is to you and your kids. I think that's amazing.
Absolutely. And we've got a lot of kids involved, and all of these are opportunities that they will never forget. Thank you for providing that.
And if they're with you, you know where they are. If they're not with you, you don't know.
Okay, for information, for information only, region, that's 19 high school choir members, punt, pass, and kick plus champions, FFA program, Pasadena Livestock Show and Rodeo Auction results, CTHS, PMS, American Welding certifications, PMHS, Tegler, and SRHS, American Welding certifications, and PMHS, AWS certifications. We certainly congratulate and appreciate each of these students and their sponsors, teachers, whatever. Moving to the policy section, consideration and possible adoption of local district update 2022 dot oh three, deleting Pasadena ISD Board Policy EF Local.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Moving to the financial section, consideration and possible approval of the budget amendments for October 2022. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Financial Compliance Schedule. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
So Mr. Poppy is just going to go over just a few items with you, board members. You are used to seeing new schools listed, so they're just going to give you a quick handout and go over some of the finer details.
Yeah, Dr. Powell told me I would have one hour.
No, whoa. Just what?
Untrue, untrue.
What did he say?
We have one hour.
Oh, disgusting.
All right, good evening, Madam President.
How about one minute?
And time's counting. All right, good evening, Madam President, Board Trustees, Superintendent Powell. On the agenda tonight is the proposed 2223 Financial Compliance Schedule. I'll just give a very brief overview, but I do want to recognize Leslie Ruston and Patty Huffman. So they are the Financial Compliance Department. So they're the boots on the ground, and they go out, and they go to campuses and departments, and they check processes and policies and procedures and workflows, and they're checking time cards and payroll and making sure all the deposits are getting deposited timely. So they, just kudos to them for all that they do. You'll see on the handout that was provided, all the work that they did in the last year. I think they did 26 or 24 campuses and apartments, so they've been very busy. So thank you very much. And then they have a busy schedule this year as well. So just want to thank them tonight. They go out, if bookkeepers go on FMLA or they're out for extended period of time at the campuses, they'll go backfill for a couple of weeks and help out the campuses as well. And then also, any changes with principals or bookkeepers, they go and audit our financial compliance to make sure they're properly, all the cash is inputted and safe before there's a changeover in personnel. So thank you very much, and that's just a quick overview. Again, tonight is just an action item for this upcoming schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Poppy.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions or discussion for Mr. Poppy? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Thank you. Moving to the operations section, consideration and possible approval of the adoption of prevailing wage rates reflected in Exhibit A for use on all PISD facility projects.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
I do have some questions.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm going to have Kevin come up. This is something, board members, we update about every three years, and most districts in our area use these same prevailing wages. This is a minimum. We've had no problems with contractors or subcontractors or bidding our jobs. In fact, a lot of times, we're getting more quality each time that we go out for bids. So do you want to answer Ms. Fusiliar's question? Do you want to go ahead?
Yes, so thank you again for meeting me with, with me before and just answering some of my questions. So some additional questions I looked at. So Harris County and City of Pasadena, which were in both, kind of depending on where you are, their prevailing wages are higher, so why adopt this particular, I guess, survey that was conducted?
We, we follow what other districts in this area are using, and the majority of the districts adopt this survey that's put out by PBK every three years. So just in speaking with other architects and other school districts, it's, the majority of them adopt these rates.
Okay, so you're saying most surrounding school districts and Gulf Coast?
Correct.
Could it be more rural areas and not necessarily city areas like we are here? Could it be just a wage difference there?
Uh, no. And talking to the architects, they really can't think of a lot of districts that do not use this. So it's, it would be a very, an exception.
Let me answer part of your question.
Sure.
We've been through this for many years, and the prevailing rates are what we use. You get involved with unions that have higher wages. It increases our cost, number one, but the big objection and the big problem with unionized labor is if they have a work strike or sit-down, we cannot afford that as a school district in building projects. And when you, if you go the other way, you're paying more, and you're also sitting out there with this bubble that can burst anytime because of stoppage, strikes, you name it. So that's why we use this kind of.
But we use a lot of union subs, right? And they've worked well with these wages. Because this, again, is just a minimum that you're, you're going with here, just like the school districts in Region Four go with. And of course, you may be looking at a city or a county that uses Davis Bacon. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that usually, I've got the architects out here saying yes. I know that pushes sometimes our bids away. So just a little history on our, our process here in PISD.
Okay. Second question. So I'm very excited about the apprenticeship language that you guys are adding. I think it's really important, just getting more people to do trade jobs, to be excited about them, to see that they're well-paying jobs as well with benefits and all that good stuff. And so we just approved district improvements. I might be going another, another way, but could somebody going into a trade like this, could that count towards CCMR as well, with that 52% going up at any point?
So it doesn't count as far as them going into the trade, but if they're continuing through the CTE process, those pathways that we have, if they go through the process, Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, they're changing it all the time, but they're making it a little more difficult, but our kids do really well comparatively because we, they get the certification, correct. So they go all the way through the foundations and all the way up through the courses and get the certification. So it doesn't necessarily depend on the job as much as it does the certification.
Okay. And with the Department of Labor Registered Apprenticeship Programs, how do we, as a district, get that data, that they are registered or that they're using an apprenticeship program as?
Well, based on our construction attorney's advice regarding this, since Texas is a right-to-work state, we have to be very careful about requiring any of those programs. This is, we could encourage it, but we cannot in any way.
Require.
Use that as part of the criteria for grading.
Mr. Kendrick, did you have questions?
Hold on.
She was asking how we get that information. That's part of the bidding contracting process. They self-report that to us. So I didn't know if that's where you were going because we.
No, I do appreciate the clarification, though, between required and encouraged. Either way, I'm definitely glad it's there. I think that's important. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Kendrick, you had question?
I think I asked it, didn't I?
Okay.
I got one. I never, and we had this conversation last time we did this. It is amazing to me that some of the wages seem so out of phase. For instance, you got a guy driving a big crane as a steel rector that has to have the hands of a surgeon without tearing things to pieces, and he's making two bucks less than a carpet layer. That makes no sense to me. That's what it is. It is. I don't understand that at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand how they come up with the survey results, but, and, and I do need to clarify that these are minimum wage rates. This is no way indicating what the laborers will be paid.
That was my understanding.
You know, we're very proud that we get very competitive bids on, on all of our projects. We'll get eight or nine major general contractors, and it really, it's, it's the market that drives what, what they're going to pay their subs, and they have to pay more to be competitive and to attract good subcontractors to work on the project. So this just, this is just minimum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote on this.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So when it comes to these wages, you know, this is really important because many of them are going to be either past students or parents who are working, you know, these projects for Pasadena. So for me, it's really important that they do get paid, you know, a fair amount for their labor. I want to know what is the process to file a complaint in case there is a violation in terms of their wages? What is the process?
Are you talking about a contractor? Because we don't pay them directly. We pay the contractor. The contractor pays the subs.
Correct. Our, our contract is with the general, so it's, they control their contracts with their subs, but.
David, is that a question you would answer? Because if a contractor's not living up to the prevailing wages, do you know anything about, I know Mickey represents us in construction law.
The business items, but, I mean, it's, it's made part of the bid and the contractual process, and so we would have, there'd be consideration of action against the contractor if they bid, and that, that, that forms part of the contract, if I'm understanding correctly.
It is published in the specifications.
We've never dealt with that. What we've dealt with is maybe slow payment. I mean, things that have come to our offices, maybe slow payment, things like that, but, you know, usually the checks in the mail kind of deal, or it's just slow.
Yeah, I've, I've never had to deal with that.
Okay. And when it comes to this process, since it's basically the contractor's job, do they post it, or is it easy to access for the workers?
Do they post their?
The job openings.
Not only the job openings, the wages, and also the process, you know, in case there is a violation when it comes to wages.
Contractor hire substantive.
We didn't, we don't get too involved in subcontractor's work, but if there is violation, it would, it should be reported to us, and we would hold them to the contract. But as far as being posted.
That'd be the contractor's.
That would be the contractor's responsibility.
Historically, have you all had a lot of problems with that?
No.
No, we've been very fortunate with our contractors. I think years ago, we had a problem with a contractor that we've no longer used, wasn't real. Wasn't revolving around wages, but there were some issues regarding the construction. But no, not, we've been very lucky, like on wood.
Yeah, if there's payment issues, we will get notified.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of design services agreement with Professional Engineering Group LLC for the 2022 bond program, parking lot lighting upgrades, LED project in the amount of $143,070, and a total project budget of $2,256,250.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
Powell, what was that percentage on that, the design service fee?
So on this one, Kevin, do you want to come up?
Yeah, this is actually a fixed fee from the electrical engineer, but it's, it's actually less than 7%, which is the standard rate for upgrades.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't have it on there.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a design services agreement with Create Architects in the 22, for the 2022 bond program, new Jessup Elementary School replacement project in the amount of $2,118,375, and a total project budget of $38 million.
So move.
Second.
Was that you, Mr. Kendrick? Okay. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
We do have architects here from Create on the front row, and since Kevin didn't list them all on my email, I don't want to mess up anybody's name, so go Kevin. I know y'all recognize these faces.
Jerry Bevel, Roger Brownlow, and Bayardo Salva.
I didn't want to mess up the names, so, there you go.
Actually, we didn't tell him.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here.
And this design fee is the 6.3, and that's normal, that falls into what we've paid in the past.
That's correct.
Yes. That's our, our standard that we've used for years, 6.3.
I had to ask because Brett would have wanted me to ask.
Any further discussion?
No, we have a, a comment. I have a comment.
Special design in art in Pomeroy, I've got to know what they're thinking about.
They want to know about a slide or a...
No.
We don't know.
My kids go there.
They have to do the shh.
I love that.
What's it called, the shh?
No water.
Shiret?
Shiret.
Shiret?
Okay, Crystal.
No water, thank you.
Yeah, I was able to hear some of the ways that this architect firm has gotten the community involved, and I'm just really excited to see what this new school's going to look like. Y'all seem like a very collaborative, creative group. I'm excited to see what this looks in the future.
My, my kiddos go to Pomeroy, and I'll say it's a beautiful school, love the slide. And I'm excited, I am excited, like Ms. Davila said, about that Jessup Elementary area. It is an area where community involvement, we just really want more of that, so it's exciting, and thank you guys for being here today.
No one laughed when Ms. Davila said they were creative, but when I said create is creative, everyone laughed.
Yeah, we did. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries, and we look forward to this. Thank you, guys. Next, we have consideration and possible approval of a design services agreement with GPD Group for the 2022 bond program for the New Parks Elementary School replacement project in the amount of $2,118,375, and a total budget project of $38 million.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
And Lisa Machella is here, and Jim McSherry, right? I did that off of memory, so...
You're good.
I couldn't find my...
Glad you're here. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a design services agreement with GPD Group for the 2022 bond program CTE classroom and lab improvements project in the amount of $536,250, and a total project budget of $8 million.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, was that you seconding?
Yes, no.
Okay. Pardon? It was you, right, Marshall? Okay. Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion?
I do want to ask this for the record, is why is the 7.5 for the design service fee?
For major renovations, 7.5 is, is also a standard rate that we've used for many, many years.
Existing walls they can tie into and...
It usually goes even higher than that, but that's for major renovations.
Thank you.
And this is for Raver.
Right. Other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of change order number 001 for the HVAC upgrades Group One project in the credit amount of $25,200.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of change order number 01 for the Building Management Control Systems, BMCS, upgrades Group One project in the credit amount of $70,622.71.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
We love those credits.
Yeah, we do. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, number 48 for the new administration building replacement project in the amount of $84,803.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for the transfer of non-committed project contingency funds to the 2017 bond contingency pool in the amount of $1,300,000.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of change order number 005 for the new maintenance operations and warehouse facility project in the amount of $862,000 to be funded by the 2017 bond contingency pool.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Construction update is for information only. Anyone have any questions, comments? Then we will move to the miscellaneous section, and this is entering our public comment portion according to BED Local, related topics not listed on the agenda, 30-minute allotment. And you have been sent a copy of the do's and don'ts. And we first want to recognize and welcome Mr. Pete Olson. We have, we're very privileged to have you here this evening. He is an ex-representative, and we're excited to hear what you have to tell us. Oh, yes, you have three minutes, and Mr. Phelan will time-keep, and he'll tell you when you have one minute left.
Thank you. Good evening, President Morgan, Superintendent Powell, and the leaders of the Pasadena ISD. My name is Pete Olson, obviously a former naval aviator with a jacket.
Sure.
And I left Congress after 12 years this past January. I'm a product of Clear Creek ISD, but that means we have something in common. We both aren't fond of Deer Park. Y'all's motto is soaring to new heights, and y'all just have a new wingman called the Lone Star Flight Museum. As a board member, I would invite all of you to come and visit our museum and learn about efforts we're doing with STEM for our graduating kids and kids in all the grades. We're going to take them soaring to new heights. We started three years ago in Galveston, Texas. Our mission there, we taught the history of flight. Hurricane Ike wiped out our base, flooded, made our planes. In 2017, we moved very close, Ellington Field. That allowed us to take a new prime mission to get our youth leading the world in STEM. In two hours, at our museum's Aviation Learning Center, students learned the basics of flight, lift, drag, navigation. Then they trained by pre-flying a real booty citation aircraft. And after that, guess what? These kids fly citation from Galveston to Ellington. Now, of course, they fly a simulator. And our STEM is not more accessible to y'all because of the distance. For example, the Bobby Shaw Middle School right now can drive to our museum in less than 15 minutes, and Galveston, that'd take them 46 minutes. That means they have one more hour to train in STEM. That makes them having a real outreach from us to make them successful, especially for kids from other privileged neighborhoods. The two hours at our museum may change your lives and see hablas, habla española. And the historic planes are still there to touch. In fact, we have a replica of the exact plane President George H. W. Bush was shot down in World War II, a TBM Avenger.
Ms...
To conclude, y'all are invited, not just y'all, but all of you, to come to your flight museum. Log on to LoneStarFlight.org for more details and learn about our new neighborhood museum. The wild blue yonder of STEM success awaits. Grab it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Olson, for joining us.
You'll be happy to know, a lot of our schools come out, because Rhonda Palmer back there is a huge advocate of the Lone Star Flight Museum.
Most of our seventh and eighth graders.
Most of our seventh and eighth graders visit during the school year.
Okay, next, we have Ms. Angela Garcia, who has some PEA concerns she wants to talk to us about.
Good evening, Dr. Powell and esteemed members of the board. Tonight, I'm just going to introduce the members of the board that have taken over and say how excited I am. My name is Angela Garcia, and I'm the new president for Pasadena Educators Association. In the audience, I have the vice president back there, and next to her is the secretary. I've worked for Pasadena ISD. This will be my 11th year in the district, and I've recently switched to special education, which I'm really excited about. And I'm also the proud parent of two PISD graduates, so I love working in the district, and I love the opportunities that our students get. I also wanted to take a moment to thank the district for allowing TSTA and Pasadena educators to make school visits this week and allow us the opportunity to talk to members. I'm proud of the work that I do in my job and the work we do here as an education association. I look forward to collaborating together with the board and with Pasadena educators to make our district an even better place for our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we have Ms. Yan Rabay, who wants to talk about the benefits of Starting School Go ahead, Ms. Rabay.
Okay. Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Yan Rabay, and I'm the, I'm an educator and the Houston area chapter leader of Start School Later. It's a national organization bringing awareness to chronic teen sleep deprivation when school starts in the early 7:00. Did you know that there is no law to say how late students can work after school? Employers can keep them as long as they want to, and many early college students stay up late to do their homework. Also, many athletes get home on weeknights from games, including band members. There is good news, though, on how these students can have more sleep, and that is by having schools start later in the morning. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, the American Psychological Association, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and many other health organization, organizations urge school districts to pay greater attention to the sleep need of middle and high school students. They recommend that school for these students start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. Here are some of the amazing benefits that just one hour and 15 minutes of extra sleep per night can bring to our students. Fewer tardies, absences, and dropouts. Fewer sports injuries, less caffeine, nicotine, nicotine, and alcohol use. Lower stress, anxiety, depression, and suicide risk. Fewer crash, car crashes, reduced risk of obesity and diabetes, less time needed to complete homework, and higher test scores. When school starts later, students can have better mental health, better grades, and be safer on the playing field. In the 1980s, Pasadena ISD had a, had an, around an 8:50 start time. That was great. Friendswood ISD, Pearland ISD, and Houston ISD currently start 8:30 or later. Parents are responsible for a healthy sleep time, but, and school is responsible for a healthy start time. Board members and superintendent, let's do the right thing and start school later for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rabay. Okay, we are through with the agenda for the public speakers, and so we're going to move, to set the date for the next regular board meeting, suggested Tuesday, November 29, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Mr., motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. And this meeting is adjourned at 8:43 p.m. Thank you for being here.